Why am I not opening up my email?
We are going live, just so you know.
Well, yeah, I'm trying to log into my email, but it's taking a minute.
We have 24 online meetings. Alright.
Hey.
Have you agendas now? Great for the show. I didn't see all the data.
It just got a curve ball.
Oh, yeah.
On the hand.
I heard about the challenge.
You got agendas and have you got a list of all of the items?
Yeah, yeah, that goes out and I used to have a meeting. Do you need the minutes for the meeting?
If the minutes are down for the last meeting, the whole packet, we tabled the meeting.
Yeah, we got the minutes for everything.
Good.
Minutes for everything, agenda and your last thing today.
Hey.
How are you?
Hey, how are you doing yourself?
I'm alright.
Hey, look at the people having fun.
Yeah.
Everything Mills doesn't see that. Stop it.
Well, she just started opening things back up. We'll see what happens.
Well, I can put a signal up there and see who's gonna attend. I don't want.
Oh. I asked Julie to make sure. Here we come.
You got busy or anything? Um, I'm getting cut off. Just say that. We'll leave it there.
How you feeling better?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Friday and Saturday, terrible.
What would be the rule on this? Some of us haven't been present at all of these meetings. Can we pass the minutes and vote on the minutes? Anyway?
Yeah, the last, yeah. They, you just have to look at, look them over and the people that were here, look them over and see if there's any mistakes. You're gonna depend on them.
Yeah, because you know, I just did three whole meetings, so they previewed the package over there. I probably. You keep it, do you have an attendance sheet? Have you been keeping attendance?
Oh, I didn't keep last month's attendance, but I do have an attendance sheet.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure we compare who's in the meeting, you guys know, if you wanted to know.
But you can have this one and mine is all in for this one. We're at the last meeting.
The grandma be kicking.
And then there's others that were here, cyber.
Is Paula coming physically today or is she doing the cyber again?
Probably not, she'd have to be here.
Can we make a photocall?
Yeah, we still have a bunch of old business to take care of.
So we didn't have a meeting in January. No, I think, yeah, we had one in January, we didn't have one in February.
Yes, we do have some, we have some board business to take care of this evening. Then go into, because I'm wondering how we're coming along on this whole investigation thing. That is wonderful, Mr. Mayor. I think we have.
Oh, and I used to tell you that when you talked, you had talked into the.
Are you letting me now?
I could hear everybody. I never heard it during the meeting when I went back through because I had to.
Should be, if my voice resonated on my.
Nope, yours is probably too far away. Your mic, if you want people to hear you.
Well, my mic's off right now because the meeting's not on. And until 6:30, those microphone should be on.
Okay. There, well, mine's on right now. I think Oliver on.
Because what happens, probably two a meeting.
I agree, it's private conversation.
It is.
Even with certain heroes, got nothing to do with planning board. Or fifteen minutes or any of that.
Can you hear me now?
Hey.
Is that Paul?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Who was Paul?
Where we, where we sailing to?
Land what?
I saw a little water trail because like.
Yeah.
I don't see anything.
This coming on. I work, I work at Oats too hard.
Well.
And I was going to.
Walk.
Walk.
More ambition than I got. You got more ambition than I got. I was going to San Diego, I was gonna fly and then ride around there this summer. Was gonna. Not anymore.
Bill writing.
I've been working on a trail, but I haven't been all riding it.
Larneta TV go by this weekend. Elm Street. Yeah.
Being good over there.
Oh, he was going slow.
And we've had a lot of traffic up by the house.
I can't say.
One of the guys told me.
Everybody's good, you get the one or two.
You got the teenagers.
All the users that have been by my place on their bikes have been very well behaved.
Well, they, they're behaving in front of my house. They wait till they get down to the Frederick's, Mr. Earl's house, and that's when they.
Awesome, as I've seen the last couple of years, Larneta TVs go by Elm Street.
Okay, it is 6:32 on this Monday night. I call this meeting to order. Will Stan do the pledge?
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America.
Stands one nation, liberty and justice for all.
Liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Julie, would you do a roll call?
Here.
Who in hand?
Present.
Fault of gods.
Here.
Paula Scott.
Here.
Paul here. And Lou Leighton. Alright. I'm glad everybody on the planning board is here this evening because the board has some business that needs to be taken care of. Planning board has been out of alignment since I took over last September. Planning board has been out of alignment since I took over last September. Our charter states that there are five members that are present on the board. That includes the chair. And there are two who are on standby or... Alternates. So this evening, we're gonna bring the planning board into compliance with the charter. And my first question is going to be... Is we need to bring one person off of the board who is presently here. And I'm gonna ask for a volunteer that wishes to drop back and be an alternate.
Can you explain what that'll be?
I volunteer.
Hey, you're not here. I'm here. I volunteer.
Hey.
Yes, an alternate is a person who will attend board meetings and will participate when a planning member cannot do the meeting, whether it be for... For any reason, whether he's absent or whether they... They can't because they have a conflict of interest.
But they still have to...
And the alternates can come to the meeting unless the chair excuses them. I was thinking about getting off this fall anyway because I thought I had a three-year tour and then the last thing we saw, so I'm good for two more years. I really, this isn't like, this isn't really my thing, to be honest with you. I was thinking about it, but whatever, whatever the flow goes. Whatever arrangements, so... Yeah, come. If... If there's by any chance anybody else that comes on to be an alternate, you could, at that point in time, if you wished, you could trade places with them. Whatever, you know, I... This isn't my thing. Understandable.
And I've been on the planning board way too long, so I'm ready to do something else.
Full of rank on me. Okay, with that, we have minutes to go through.
So which one are you gonna make the alternate?
Yeah, we didn't come to a decision yet.
Oh, the alternate. Oh, we have to, uh... Uh, Paula, are you... You accepting that? Or would you like Fod to have that? Seems like you're fighting over this position. What's arm wrestle?
Well, I was gonna say that too, arm wrestling.
Probably beat me anyway, so...
Right. I've been working out. Side.
So...
Well, I'll take the alternate position and then we can search for someone to replace Fod.
That sounds like a plan. That's good. Alright. Nobody comes along and nobody comes along. So Paula is volunteered to... Paula Bolduc is... Paula volunteered to step back and become an alternate. I need a motion for that in a second.
I make a motion that Paula Boulder becomes the alternate.
That's good, Paula.
Take a little chance, is it she?
Wow. It actually has to come from one of the four other members.
Okay.
Bud?
Three dozen eggs to whoever sticks cheeks up you.
I'll make a motion Paula Bolduc becomes the alternate. In a second on that? Okay, any discussion? None? None seen? All in favor? Welcome to the alternate position, Paula.
Thank you.
Okay.
So now that I'm the alternate, do I just sit here and observe and not vote and whatnot?
Correct. Being five present on the board tonight, that would be the way things will go.
Okay.
I would think so.
I... Yeah, when it comes to the discussion, I would imagine that she would be involved in that discussion. The panel discussion.
Would or wouldn't?
I would. I would... I would like it to happen that way. Because I think that you're... The information from the alternate is probably gonna be questions that we don't think of. So the more questions that come in, it's better.
Really, an alternate, it's important for you to be here and be engaged. If you just come and don't engage, you're not gonna know what's going on for the next meeting that you might have to step in and be a part of it. So that's pretty important.
Yeah.
They contribute.
Yep.
They just can't... They're not a voting member.
I agree with that. Okay, first, uh, first up is the minutes. See if I got these right. There should be three sets of minutes, or is it just two? Uh, we're gonna go to the May 18th, 2020 minutes. Accept the motion.
I have a correction. 4.1. My last name is Stotts, not Scott.
Make a motion to... Make a motion, accept the minutes of May 18th. With... With the correction, all of the Scott, not as Scott.
I second the motion.
Any further discussion? Corrections? All in favor? Wasn't here. It's 3-4? Two people did not vote, as I and Lu and Ann. Uh, Paula, you voted on that? You were present on that?
Yeah. Bolduc, yep.
She gave a vote.
She was part of those minutes. She was... Yeah, she was part of those minutes.
I don't know. She gave a vote because she's not a voting member.
No, maybe I made the correction a little too soon. All's good. Well, then we can't pick. Have you passed those minutes with just two? It was three.
It was the third one.
It worked. You had to... I woke because of conflict interest.
But he was still there.
Off of the minutes, okay, alright. Yeah. Okay. Nothing to do with both. Yeah. Okay, alright. June 8th. Minutes.
Like to make a motion that we accept the minutes of June 8th, 2020, as presented to us.
We hear a second? Seconded by Fod. Any discussion? Any corrections? Yes, I came in. It was signed. I initialed every one that we had gone through where special circumstances were needed. And I initialed those as they went through. And it's been signed and delivered, I believe.
Yeah. Yep, it has, and they... Um, I got in touch with them on Friday because they went to the PUC supposedly on Thursday. But they actually didn't because the PUC at the last minute extended it to this Thursday.
We need to vote on that.
Yes, all in favor of the minutes? That passes unanimously. Old business. Is there any old business that the board wishes to bring up and or discuss?
Um, yeah, I'd like to know at some point, um, where we stand with the investigation of the code office from previous months, which we kind of left hanging. No idea what the conclusions were of all of the different, uh...
Complaints.
So at some point, I'd like to see that addressed.
Not necessarily tonight, but...
Last I knew, we're...
Had somebody that was gonna take a look at things and...
And I have no idea where we're at now.
Um, it would be. It would be, uh, just the knowledge of knowing. We don't have really anything to do with the investigation, but, um... Can I ask Julie to send a note to the council? They can reply back in a letter to us as to where the investigation stands? Thank you, Julie. Alright, that's, uh, basically... Any other old business?
I can share a couple of things. One is about the... The next grid project. So I got in touch with Gil the next day, Friday, and he informed me that they extended it until Thursday. And I said, please let me know as soon as you hear anything, what... What comes out of their acceptance meetings. So he said he would certainly do that. I did get them the signed form that the board voted on and you signed it that next Wednesday. I got that to them. That's all they needed. So they're now waiting for Thursday to show up. I asked them, I said, what... What... How... How long will it take? It depends on the number of applications they got. Yeah, I will let you know. I'll certainly send out an email as soon as I hear from Gil. The next thing, I had a resident, um, Jeff Coolidge from the Sugar Shack, got in touch with me and he talked to me about his existing plan, site plan that you guys had voted on, and he has approved. He wants to reduce the size of a building and, uh, I just need to know what you'd like me to do with that. He actually checked in with me a couple of times. So I'm gonna give this out to you and you guys get to decide whether you want me to take care of it or you want to bring this back to a different meeting and talk about it more in depth. But basically, his initial plan is what's on here. You'll see an X on the spot that he wants to adjust.
So all we're gonna do is look at this and determine whether or not we should bring it back to another meeting. Is that what you're looking for is...
Yes.
Advice on that?
Um, yeah, I just wanna comment about it. So the piece that he wants to get rid of, the X, he's gonna eliminate that from his initial plan, which would be a reduction of 1,200 square feet in that building. The little side building way up front, you see the 12 by 60... Uh, 12 by 36 piece? Off the shop in the front right corner of the plan. There's a little piece there he'd like to add a part of the building on, which would be a total of 432 feet with a difference of 764 feet total. So he's reducing his footprint by 764 feet. So he's not adding anything. He just wants to take away from what he currently has. He has other move... Uh, other things that he'd like to do, and I said, those are more complicated. You need to... You'll need to bring those to the board specifically, but I'll check on this one part only to see if he can do that this... This summer. As soon as he gets going on that. So you guys can decide if you want me to do an authorization or you want this whole thing to come back.
I have no problem with the CEO taking care of this.
I don't either, as long as his permit reflects the reduction in size so that later down the road...
And I'll take care of it.
Do we need to make...
Um, no. I see one more thing on here. Roof on a stick.
I have no idea what that is. That's nothing... That's nothing to do with anything we talked about.
Okay.
But if he decides to put a roof on a stick there, he needs to come to plan of course.
Exactly.
The only things we talked about was the X area and that addition onto the side of the shop.
Yeah, last year he had, um,
One of the mattress places or something.
Yeah.
Oh, he purchased that and was selling it.
Great, thank you. The last thing is, um, I would like to get an idea as to what you would like me to follow up with, and part of it goes to your comments about the investigation things I'm doing. So I've started talking to people that are in violation of our code already. Several people have been notified. Some people have made changes, which is great. But I need to know if you want me to start clamping down on enforcement and... And the rules that you guys have made. If that's the direction that you'd like me to take or would you like me to continue to organize or work on organizing the files and ordinances that we have existing? Need to get an idea of what the planning board has. What's their priority? What are you... What are you thinking? Well, I really... I haven't really... I wouldn't say clamp down, but I said, in violation. And I just need you to know that I'm... I'm well aware of that, so... One of them is Economy Auto has lots of vehicles in the back of their shop, probably 22. Uh, last time I counted, we're 22. Uh, I did notify him that he is... That's the definition of a auto graveyard, and he has a license for that. He said he didn't know that, which is fine. I said, well, you'll need to take care of that, and I'll be back in a week or two to specifically tell you exactly what you need to do. So I'd rather take a lighter stance at first. They'll know I mean business. The other thing was ordinance for, uh, a rooster was in town and I just notified them of the nuisance ordinance. I had a complaint. That person, uh, the person that owned the rooster, prepared it the next week. I was amazed, you know?
This may be the rooster that was in Cumberland Farms, I think.
And actually, I actually went back and thanked the rooster people for taking care of that. I really appreciate that. It's the right thing to do. So that thing, um...
Yeah, having those kind of animals in town in close proximity where the population is pretty dense would be an issue.
And the last thing is, uh, I've had the owner of the garage that is Sally's or was Sally's come in and talk to me, and I told her I'm... I'm in the process of investigating specific things about her site with the Department of Environmental Protection and the Department of Agriculture who monitors flood plain. Uh, she's in a hundred year flood plain there. So that's a... That's an issue. So I've talked to her about it. I said, she wanted to know what she had to do now. I said, not a thing. Don't... Please don't do a thing. Please don't start building because she told me she was gonna start building July 1st. You shouldn't do that. Just saying. You should not do that. If you don't have a permit, please don't start building. And she said she would... She would not do that. And I said, I don't do anything until I get back to you because I have... I have information that I'm waiting for from different departments. That information isn't coming very quickly these days because no one's working from their office, so pretty hard to get, but I'm working on it.
Alright, you've got a list, uh, like...
Yes.
Do we wanna work? Do we wanna work on this list that's coming forth in a meeting format, or do we wish to work on that in a workshop format?
Well, what's this list here?
Well, I don't have that in front of me.
That's with the minutes in the same packet, except the last page of it.
Last page. I've got an extra packet if you need it.
So what I did was include any... Any suggestions or notices that have come to me since I've been here in the pack. You have those? All I've done is talk to MMA, um, and ask for their input from their attorney, which I have here. It's not a lot, but it's at least.
My phone's frozen and Ben was checking on my other phone.
I talked to Lou. Um, you guys might do additional work.
Thank you.
Past what I have here from MMA. Um, and I also need to know what you'd like me to do further with this. Do you want me to collect samples? Do you want me to? Do you wanna collect the samples? I don't know. Let me know what I need to do.
What's your definition of a sample?
Sample from other towns of the, of like ordinances. So.
Yeah. Uh, let's, let's, um, let's look at this for a second.
Yeah.
And we'll determine an order in which we want to go down through.
Um, before we do that, um,
But my.
I didn't answer his question about enforcement, how we wanted, if we, if we wanted to have input on how he enforces.
Just in general, what, what you want me to focus on here?
My thing, what he, um, looked at, maybe seemed relatively important. Okay, it wasn't stuff, it was not, it was serious. Big cars on a floodplain. So I think it's good that he's doing that. But he also needs to be.
Exactly.
That is actually, um, that's a bigger, a bigger thing than dealing with violations.
I think whatever you feel comfortable with.
That's what used to happen to me when I worked for a life corporation, what you do both.
My, my biggest concern is if a resident comes in and has a complaint, I wanna make sure that it's looked at seriously and investigated, um, and feedback is given back to them. Um, and they're not just left hanging, not knowing if they've been listened to or not and feeling feeling unlistened to, I guess is a good way of putting it.
So what you're saying, Paula, is that it should be when a, when someone comes forth and they have an issue and they fill out a complaint. And then it's looked at, that there's a checklist that they go by in order to, I've done this, I've done this, I've done that, you know, and just go through the checklist and then give the results, uh, probably to both the planning board and or the individual that put the complaint up. Well. Let, let's. It's possible.
It's possible. Arring this information.
Not, and I have that, I have that packet. I'm not, I didn't intentionally haven't done anything with that. I know that some of the stuff that I'm working with is, is in there. So i- if it's important, I'm gonna know it.
That's my only concern is that they feel listened to and they're gotten back to with some kind of an answer instead of feeling like their complaint has gone into a black box of no return and.
Well, the rooster complaint got back to me immediately with a thank you card. So she knows that that's happened. And the person with the rooster, I also went and complimented them on their actions. So they know. So I'm not a no, no action kind of guy. I'm.
Thank you.
Then I'll move.
I hope in your future that they're all resolved in that manner.
Not gonna promise that. I'll, I'll probably make some mistakes too. So you guys gotta keep that in mind.
Are you human?
Yeah.
I know I am.
I was gonna say, we all are.
Great.
Um, on this list here, my biggest concern is the marijuana ordinance thing. I had Mr. Thayer, conversation with Mr. Thayer. The way we intended our ordinance to be of there just being two facilities and Mr. Thayer and Mr. Clark owning those two licenses, one for medical and one for.
Paul, can I get into this just a little?
Sorry.
Just get into this a little. We need to go through this and then we're gonna put them in an order in which we want to discuss them.
Okay.
And not discuss them right off the bat.
Okay.
The Knox Box, Alan, is becoming law here, isn't it? Or is already law? Or is it gonna be law when they pass it in the legislature when it comes up?
I don't even know about a, a bill to Tim for that.
Uh, that was coming up this year at all new commercial buildings. We're gonna have a Knox Box. I believe it was July 1st.
Okay. That's news to me, so I'll check on that.
Yeah, would you?
I have.
I wanna make sure that that information was correct.
I have a source I can call up and he can look it up for me.
Is it Google?
Nope. The Secretary of the Senate.
Cool. Just an explanation on the first one. Any licenses that come due renewal of permits, the planning board should at least be notified of them. So if we have some of, if we have, um, garages in town and they have applied for a straight permit, doesn't need to come through the planning board. It would be nice for us as a community and the planning board to know whether or not that permit was really intended to go along with the permit we gave. That's the way I'm looking at it.
So you're not talking like liquor license?
No, no, that has nothing to do with this, this, this board at all. I'm not looking for cat renewals and dog licenses. Those are, I'm just looking for these special permits that are required. If somebody came here and asked for, uh, and got a, wanted a permit to create a gravel pit. You need a permit, anything over 2,000 cubic yards that is eliminated from the ground. It'd be nice for the planning board to know that. Because it may not be in an area where the town is really particular in having it. It would be a new one. It wouldn't be an existing.
Any license that pertain to approvals that the planning board did?
Any permits that we have issued and the state has allowed permits on top of it? I think it would be in best interest.
And driveway permits, just so you know. I've got no interest in driveway.
I don't want anything to do with DOT. You know, that's, Alan can handle all that stuff. It's just this larger stuff.
So permits issued under conditional use.
Yes. Um, Sally's comes to mind. He has an operation there and to come find out, he got a salvage permit from the state. And he has a permit from this board, I believe, if I look at it and read it correctly. It says to sell automobiles and repair automobiles. It doesn't say anything about non-running automobiles that you can't walk to, turn the key and have it turn over, maybe not stop, but turn over or parts totally missing, like engines.
He came to me and requested that recycler license from the state and I told him I wouldn't sign that. I checked with the state and there, in the hundred year floodplain, there's no auto graveyard. He's not licensed for that with our permit and the hundred year floodplain, uh, precludes that him, him doing that. So.
Now.
He didn't get what he needs from me already.
Does, does that mean that whatever was done prior, on Lloyd?
I'm not, I'm not gonna issue a, uh, I'm not gonna sign a, a license that's illegal. I'm not doing that. It, to my knowledge, anyway. If I don't know, I don't, I'm gonna look into it before I sign something.
Yeah, it would be a, yeah, if you need to, you can use the town attorney for that also. Uh, there's dog kennels and puppy mills, uh, and everything we've had to do with those. Walter remembers them well. I believe that was his first meeting. I've never seen so many people at a, a planning board meeting ever. The next one is to, is household trash. We've had issues with that in the past and looked to clean up, clean it up a little bit with an ordinance that specifically says something. They can have their trash. They can do whatever they want with their trash, but if it's gonna be on the sidewalk or in public view, maybe it should be in a container. It's in the back of the house. I really don't.
What I mean by collectibles is there are people who like to haul crap home and they leave it all over their front yard.
Quarters.
I don't know. If we have an ordinance for it, it's important.
Yeah, we have one right here on Pleasant Street that piles his trash outside his house, right next door to me.
Uh, yeah, I'm thinking of that one. And I'm thinking of that one too, Paula. He, but what's, what's enforceable? If it's a business, I would think it's enforceable, but for an individual on his own private property?
If there's, if it's garbage and clearly garbage, that's the, that's life safety issue.
Trash bags.
Yeah, if it's in trash, garbage, yeah, that's enforceable. Yeah. With other collectible things that there's going on in the lawn?
Well, it's one thing if it's a lawn ornament. It's another thing if it's a bus full of lawn ornaments.
That would be.
It's just, just a question.
It, it's a good one, Lou. We should add that to, uh, the list.
But I do agree with the household trash. Now you're bringing in rodents and so on and so forth.
Oh, yeah. It, it's a definite public safety issue.
These guys have got a front yard. I'm not sure if that's. I don't like it. No, it's not trash.
So it's equipment. You can walk up to it and start it.
I'm sure the neighbors would like it. You know?
I believe you skipped one though.
Which one is that?
Property that's within a hundred, within sewer and water area?
Oh, yeah, that's, um, um, looking at, uh, the town map and the interior city itself. Uh, we have town water and town sewer and there's way our ordinance is written. Once you get out of that business town where the congestion is, lot size goes up drastically. And it goes up quite, you know, substantial and it's eliminating the possibility of building homes that could be using the services that the town provides. And the services of the water and sewer primarily. And our sewer department, I believe, is running at less than half 50% or it's just about 50%. And I'm sure the water capacity could be increased to quite a bit. We have two holding tanks that hold a lot of water.
Believe that commas in the long span.
Yeah, it should be 10,000 feet.
Right, Lou?
Yeah.
Not a hundred.
The commas not supposed to be there.
And I'm, I'm just, I'm looking wherever the city water and city sewer and a town road or a state road that we reduce the size of a lot so that we can impact those infrastructures that we have a little more, uh, and utilize them and increase their functionality. So that's where I'm looking at there. As you get out and you have just town water or, or town sewer, then we can reduce the size there also because of a fact, and I'd like to see that done.
Do you have a limit, a, a minimum square footage per house? I haven't seen that yet.
Yes, we do.
Where's that?
It's in the housing and it's 860 square feet.
I thought it was 600.
Or a stick-built house. 24 by 30 is what the size is, I believe, of what the ordinance states. And I imagine if that applies to, if that applies to a stick-built structure within this community, it should also apply to any trailer that comes into this community. Um, we've already discussed a little bit about developing a noise, nose, a no, noise. Sorry about that. My, uh, list is getting a better. Noise ordinance. So that we have something that's on the books that's fairly okay. And then we can extend that to, to, to go with nuisance animals. Uh, maybe that should be two separate items instead of just one. And then the last one, I'm not looking to, uh, stop anybody from using any firearms whatsoever. But I believe if you discharge a firearm within the community, the end object that's firing out of that should land on your property. If not, you should have a written permission slip.
There goes all your hunting.
This does not, this is not hunting. Nothing to do with it at all.
This is Jeremy Gay, I mean Dave Gagnon shooting off his rifle at all hours of the day.
I understand.
It's, if you have a hundred by a hundred lot, you take a rifle and go and shoot it into the woods. A little dangerous for wherever you're pointing that gun, the other gun.
Question though, what doesn't the state already have ordinances on the books that say you're not supposed to be discharging a firearm within 300 feet of?
That's for hunting. Totally different.
I thought that was curious with firearms.
And the police say they have to catch the people doing it in order to enforce the law. Cause we've been down that road before.
Well, I know. So it's, it's, these are all items for discussion. Nothing is written in stone and we're gonna make a list of those and start discussing them tonight. The list falls, falls.
Well, you have zoning, so you could specific zone, you could limit things in specific zones, like larger cities don't allow or, don't allow the discharge of a firearm in the city limits. That's it. There's all kinds of places around those cities that people go and target practice and line up their sites and do all that. But in the city, because it's densely populated, firing a weapon is not always a safe thing to do.
Tell that to the bad guys.
Yeah. But the good guys too, that are firing weapons to do whatever, you have more people, the chance of hurting someone is great.
Yeah. And I don't know as if I've ever seen anything discharged within this community on purpose. You know, or casually. I haven't heard of anything. I'm just looking at trying to corral some of the people that go out and pick a spot, decide to shoot.
You could probably ask, um, the police department about their records and complaints about random rifle shooting, you know, during the day, not hunting related, but just people shooting off rifles around holidays, Fourth of July.
Now, one thing.
Discharge of any firearm, actually.
One of the thing you're gonna have to remember is this community has a lot of law enforcement in it and they're required to qualify so many times a year with that weapon or weapons and it's both daytime and nighttime. And so if you've got 10 different people from 10 different departments, they do them at different times of the year, that may be. That may be some of your firing at night. Now, when my husband does it, he picks up the phone, he calls dispatch and he says, okay. This is what you're gonna hear and why you're gonna hear it. Maybe the other ones don't necessarily do that, but I do wanna remind everybody, we do have quite a bit of law enforcement in this community. And they are required to qualify.
They have their own range though.
Right. Neither one of my neighbors are in law enforcement.
Wasn't law enforcement. He was shooting.
Well, I understand that, but I wanna make sure that when we go about making an ordinance, we remember. We have law enforcement in this community. We're required to qualify so many times a year, both day and night.
But they're required to follow the same laws as everyone else.
And I understand that. What I'm saying is we shouldn't just make an ordinance that says there can be no firing in this. No, they don't. The mechanic falls police do, but if you have somebody from Anders Goggan. Or from Cumberland or from one of the. Outer lying departments, they necessarily don't have a spot that they go to all the time. It's becoming a bigger and bigger burden because the outsiders are moving in and they're shutting down the ranges because they. Moved into a development that has a range behind them and then they decide, oh, I don't like that. I'm gonna shut it down and they're succeeding at it.
Well, this isn't anything about that. This is about. If you're gonna shoot off a gun on your property, the bullet has to land on your property. This is, all this is entailing. Correct. I, if anybody with any firing experience with a weapon. Will understand what needs to be done, will call the proper authorities and notify them. They're doing it nighttime. They'll do that at night. You'll tell them that doing it at night.
So you're telling me we've had complaints of people shooting firearms that are actually landing on other people's property?
Uh, right. Isn't that right, Paula?
Yes, he stands at the end of his driveway and shoots towards Lou's house across the river. Or he stands. And shoots at my house and I can show you the trees with the bullets in them. This has been going on since I lived here with the people next.
I was gonna say the tree rats, right?
Could have hit that.
And the other guy on the other side goes out and shoots during at night at what, when he hears noises behind his house. And then comes over in the morning and wants permission to go on our land to see what he shot.
And, um, the other.
Say, I'd be calling the cops.
We have many times and they say unless we can catch them doing it, we can't do anything about it.
Which any ordinance we pass with.
It would reflect that also. Uh, and the, the last, I, I see you have one here, Paula. You wanna. Two hundred and fifty feet of road frontage per, uh, commercial.
Well, what I'm looking for is we have pieces of property in town that only have two hundred and fifty or three hundred feet of road frontage that are out on. Commercial, out on twenty-sixth, but that's all they have. Fifteen, twenty, thirty, whatever acres and the way our current ordinance is written. Um, in order for something to go in there, every use is required to have. Two hundred and fifty feet of road frontage. So if a strip mall wanted to go in, they couldn't put a strip mall in.
They could if they put a road in.
They could, they could do that, Paula, even under our ordinances that we have now because the planning board has the ability to waive. Those.
Actually, we don't. Only the appeals board does.
No, that's a variance.
And that would be a variance.
Note that we could waive that footage.
How do you, I guess I don't get that one. How can you waive it for one but not another?
If I got it right is.
How do you enforce that?
It, it's, um.
I don't, I still don't see where it's a problem. If they got fifty acres and only two hundred fifty feet on. A designated highway or, or a piece of, of secondary road, put a road in. Just down the road over here. They, they put a road in this couple mobile homes and they wanted the development at one time. Dollar General or one of them places wanted to build down here and then we're gonna put a road in.
This.
Simple.
I'll give you the perfect piece of land out behind where the head shop is right now. Um, prior to twenty-six, doing all that change, the department of. The DOT changing everything around and adding another one, there was a very large hunk of land in there. And it only had two hundred and fifty feet and people kept coming to the town wanting to put more than one use in there. And because of that ordinance, they kept being told no. So I'm looking to eliminate that issue so that if we have pieces of land like that. And they're especially in commercial, we're able to allow them to be built up and utilized. What I'm looking for.
And find out what are the towns are doing.
One big difference I see is if it's a driveway, the town doesn't own it. If it's a street, um, we're gonna be responsible for.
So there's added cost for the.
So that's, then that's why I, I brought it up was because that's been an issue. Now, of course, Schmuck had a peaceful hand out there, but he kept trying to sell and trying to sell and he couldn't because somebody wanted to put. More than one use on it and the way our ordinance is currently written, it couldn't be. Now that they've moved Winterbrook. You know, they've gone down Route eleven, that's taking care of that particular piece of land, but there are other pieces along twenty-sixth. That are in that boat.
Right.
And they don't have any other way to, to fix it. So, so that's my concern is that we're cutting our.
Putting in a driveway or roadway or something and.
Well, we do have a backlot situation here within this community too.
And that's what it falls under. It would, that's how they were, but prior codes officers were looking at it. Was, well, you could put two, but you can't put anymore because you got a backlot, thirty-five feet is a backlot. Yeah.
Alan, I have a question for you on this next one. Discussion of marijuana ordinance. My question to you is, is, uh, have the permits been issued for the medical storefronts?
For the medical storefront? Yes, they have. For the adult.
Yes.
No, well, no, the adult, the law hasn't been passed, so we can't give any ordinances.
Not for adult use.
And that brings up, and thi- this one's fairly easy to solve this evening. It brings up a, a question that we need to revisit this ordinance to make sure that it reflects. What our thinking was at the time. Cause currently right now, it does not reflect that. So I would look at a motion. Right now. That we freeze this.
A moratorium.
Moratorium for at least three months until we can correct this situation.
I second that.
You can't, I can't move that.
You could, you could just say moratorium until you decide on, um.
Uh, no, there actually is a time limit on moratoriums. I believe it's a hundred and eighty days.
Six, yeah, six months.
Uh, we can loosen it anytime we want, but I think this would be, give us an opportunity to correct the situations that. Weren't. The way the board felt wasn't transferred to the paper correctly. So it now looks different than the way we actually passed it.
And what the people in the town verbalize to us that they want it.
So.
I have a couple of things to add to that. So. Oh, shoot, we lost that.
You, you want, do you wanna do it during the discussion once a motion?
I just wanna, oh, um. So that, I just wanna throw out that an attorney has gotten in touch with me and that's why this came up. Because he is, he is working to submit another application, at least one. Um, because our ordinance says four facilities, so he is going to submit another.
Well, correct. Explain how those four facilities are though.
Well, the ordinance says that it, that there can be four facilities in the town. So it's all kinds of definitions that, basically the definition of facility is missing from the order. If you define facility as. The wording has to, has to change somehow.
Yes.
So the applications, so the, uh, medical app, applications have already been issued, the permit. For medical have been issued. There have been two letters of intent submitted last week. By the two peo- gentlemen in town for the adult use. Those are just letters of intent. Those are not applications.
Correct.
But they are letters of intent and we've received those. So if a moratorium goes into place now, we've received those.
Correct. So again.
If I understand correctly, we make, we go through making the motion and either approving it or denying it. If we approve it. Then it goes on to the council and the council then.
They have the last say.
They will either accept it or reject the moratorium.
And they usually be based on what the planning board suggests in this area.
But we need some correction in the language in that one. So.
I make a motion that we put a moratorium into place for a hundred and eighty days. Um, on the marijuana ordinance.
Uh, to?
Up to a hundred and eighty days on the marijuana ordinance in order for us to be able to. Rectify language that is missing from. The current ordinance that was meant to be there.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous? Thank you.
And Mr. Clark, your question about dwelling size.
Yeah.
I don't know what the new one says, but in the one that I have on page ninety-three, letter K. Um, it says each single family dwelling and any seasonal camp occupied more than three months per year. Constructed or located within mechanic balls must have a minimum gross floor area of six hundred square feet. Calculated from the exterior dimensions of the dwelling structure. And then down in M, it addresses the minimum width of manufactured homes. Um, it says the minimum width of manufactured homes as installed on a site, uh, is eleven feet, six inches. All manufactured housing units that move into the town must comply with the safety standards. In the National Manufactured Housing Construction and Safety Standards Act of nineteen seventy-four. U.S. Code Title forty-two, Chapter seventy, as revised. And under M, it gives you other things that go along with that.
Good. Thank you. I stand corrected. By sixty feet.
Uh, six hundred feet, square feet. Floor area six hundred square feet calculated from the exterior dimension.
Yeah, that's very deceiving. We ought to change that wording on that because somebody would go over there and measure from eve to eve and the guy's got a three-foot overhang. Uh, what order of business would we like to?
Well, we've taken care of the marijuana one.
How about the, you start with the trash?
Yeah.
That seems like it'd be fairly easy. We can go to dog kennels.
Alan, if I may, am I allowed to add any, uh, information to the meeting?
Sure, TJ. Go ahead.
Hey, hey, everyone. I don't know who can see me here. TJ, this is TJ there. Um, I just wanted to add one small correction. We would have applied. For our adult use facilities on that date when we signed our letters of intent, if there had been an application available. So our intent was to come in and to apply for, already having received our medical retail facilities permits. We're there to apply for adult use retail facility permits. So that was our intent was to apply on that date.
And the moratorium doesn't affect him or Mr. Clark, right? Because they already.
Correct. They already have permits, so the moratorium cannot stop that. Or do we need to reword that?
Their medical use permits are issued. Their adult use permits are not. They've submitted an adult use letter of intent.
Okay, so.
So they're not helped to the moratorium.
We, we, we need to, I, I will make a call tomorrow and make sure that this motion was legal.
There's a, no diff- I looked it up after, uh, I sent the email and everything. There's no legal definition inside Maine. Uh, OMP, that's Office of Marijuana Policies definitions under what pertains to as a facility. Uh, under cannabis law in the state of Maine. So, uh, as far as I understood, and I did state this in the letter. I believe as, um, although it's not, uh, permissible right now under state law. We could still get municipal permits to, when the time comes to allow us to. Get municipal adult use retail permits now. So that when we may apply when the state opens back up. Because we need to have local, uh, authorization before we even apply to the state for those permits. So that was our main intent. It was really just to try to get our adult use retail permits now. Essentially getting the okay from the state, uh, excuse me, getting the okay from mechanic falls before we apply to the state for the same permits. That was our intent.
I, I remember talking about this when they were here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and some of this language that he's bringing up again and. You know, he's, he's just repeating.
He's, he's stating the same thing.
Exactly.
But our ordinance doesn't reflect what the planning board's intent was. At that point in time. And the intent was is never to have four separate facilities within the community.
Correct.
No, the intent was two.
Was the two facilities that would have the four licenses that would serve all.
Correct.
And that's still what we want. That's still what we're, our intent is.
But because of the way we've written it. Technically, somebody could push us to say four facilities that they just have. Or is, or separate building.
Well, we need to get it corrected.
So, yeah, we need to sit down and have a correction of that.
Yeah.
Uh, and the sooner it happens, the freer will be. Through the, through the summer. And I think we can probably get that corrected in one workshop meeting, probably. Two hours, three at the most. And get the wording and sent off the legal and have everybody double check it. I think it would be a good workshop to have do that.
And I recommend that we consider asking the council once again to be there. Um, so that they have firsthand knowledge of what's going on and we'll know when it gets to them because they'll be the ultimate. Yeah, you're a nayer of it.
Yeah. And you can't legally, the CEO of this community, I don't believe, can issue a permanent.
Till the laws in place.
Till the laws in place.
I don't think I would be comfortable doing that.
So I think this is our best solution to the issue at hand. And we can do that. And since those permits aren't being issued and we see the flaw, we need to correct it.
Understood. Thank you very much, uh, everyone on the planning board and town officials. Really appreciate you guys, your, uh, perseverance in this. I know it gets complicated very quickly. But I really appreciate everyone coming together and working hard and doing you guys, doing what you guys do so well. Thank you.
And I would assume. And I would assume that. The application process, when it does move forward again, because as far as I'm concerned, as long as the council okay's it, there'll be a moratorium. It would be on a first-come basis, first-come, first-served basis. And I don't know that the law allows for letters of intent to be that first-come, first-served. Term basis, but. They've been, they've submitted that they want an application before any moratorium took place. It makes sense to me that they are here and requesting an application as soon as those can be provided for them.
Yeah.
May I ask a question while?
Just one, one sec before I forget. I do that a lot lately. Julie, could you write that motion? Up for the ordinance and have it on a piece of paper tomorrow. I'll come in and sign it. We'll send it to the plant, uh, to the council.
For the moratorium.
For the moratorium.
You have it recorded, right?
Yes.
Um, and my question is that. While. My bird went out the window. It'll come back to me. It was up at three-thirty this morning.
Why so late?
I'm babysitting a four-year-old because her mom is a nurse and it's considered essential.
Yeah. Um, so would you like to go through with the? Trash one to start with?
Sure, let's do it.
Um. For health reasons and safety reasons. We should have anything that's. Any trash?
You want to just say household trash?
Household trash, yeah. Has to be in a container. How many feet from?
If within sight of the road.
With ins- with inside of the road. Yeah, sounds good.
So it can't be visible from the road, basically.
Yeah, plastic trash bags with animals strewn all through it.
So you wanna be specific about container? Cause if it's in a.
Trash. Covered trash container. Alright.
A waste receptacle?
Waste receptacle, covered?
I know, is a trash bag a waste receptacle?
It wouldn't be covered.
If it's tied in a knot, it's covered.
You're right. Or has to have a lid of some kind. Uh, and this excludes all dumpsters or outdoors.
There's lots of towns around here.
Let's find one.
Let's find one that works for some other town.
Yeah.
Wording. It would all need to go through the, the attorney as far as I'm concerned. Any ordinance change?
Oh, yes. Definitely.
Because my question is, the complaints have been about visibility. So we need to include about the visibility of it from the road.
Well, it's visibility and safety. Uh, if you have trash thrown out on. Front porch of your house right outside your front door. Uh, subtracting all kinds of animals, God knows what. You know, right list about six.
I'll let you know when I see you there.
The past, the problem that. Ask that person to pick up their trash. They did it one time, but it was repeated offense. Like, oh, that's the big problem, like. They may pick up the trash that the first time they get spoken to, but following the two years later, they're getting spoken to again. They're not following through. They may pick it up that one time. That was one of the problems around the main street. They were leaving their trash. They would get told you must clean it up, they would clean it up, and then when it's changed, it's back to the same cycle of. Doing something out there. So it would never end.
Yeah. I understand too, if, if somebody's having some difficulty with this situation. Uh, I'm sure if they made a call within town hall here somewhere, somebody would be willing. To help them out with their situation if they can't bring it to the transfer station. You know, if it's. Just a couple of bags, you know, it's gonna be thirty or forty. Now that's a different story.
You have a violation process though, right?
Yes, we do.
I've seen that on the paper.
Yes.
So I assume I'll follow a violation process. If I. Issue the violation, you have a certain amount of time. If it's non-life threatening, to take care of it, and I make the determination for that. If it's not rectified, or if it's cleaned up, and then in two weeks later, I'm gonna come back and say, no. You've been notified once. I don't care if this is a different bag of trash, it's trash. And I proceed with the second action and the third action. And all the remaining actions.
And it's, yeah, it's just not a. Nice, visible entry into our community.
Yep.
Um, dog kennels, I don't know about you guys. I really don't want any more in town.
Well, unless, my opinion is unless they're rural. There shouldn't be.
If they can be twenty-five hundred feet from the nearest resident. I'll give them a permit.
That would be in minus the way.
I was gonna say you're putting it on.
Harrison. We have three right now, and. That's plenty, and we have one that is downtown. And it's a nuisance downtown. I hear it barking all the time.
So that's still there?
Have they moved?
I don't know. That's what I'm asking. It's still there.
Yes.
If I may, back when the planning board approved that. You need to go back to the file because it was a conditional use based on. They were required to keep certain types of cleanliness and noise control.
She's talking about Maple Street. You're talking about Oxford.
I thought it was Maple Street. We did the same things because it was right down in town. That if there were any noise issues, that they could be forced to cease and desist.
Must have been before me.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. But, and that's fine. I very seldom hear the one on North Street, and I'm not very far from them. But I don't know about you, but I would like to have a. No more dog kennels within the community. At all. Or animal kennels? I don't know. How would you word that?
I would have to check with someone.
I'd hate to use the word domestic animals. Is that include anything?
Correct, and we have a right to farm. Or law in the state that protects. Certain types of like rabbits and. Different ones.
Yeah, they don't bark very loud.
Rabbit, so?
No, but what I'm saying is if we're not careful with the way we word any potential ordinance.
Correct. I don't want to impact anything other than the, this one.
Okay.
So you got that, Alan?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll write something up and.
You wanna limit the number of license.
Exactly.
Mm-hmm.
That's what we're looking at, right?
We're looking to change the ordinance to read no more. Dog kennels in town. We have three.
Well, what's the ordinance read now?
There's no limit.
There's no limit.
Okay, so we're gonna change it to three.
Yes, correct.
Well, if, these are grandfathered.
Right.
And as long as they keep their licenses up and everything.
Right.
They're fine. But once they. Either leave town or whatever. It goes away. Okay.
They say no more new.
No more new. Dog kennels, puppy mills, or. Yeah, I don't, I don't foresee issues with. You know, somebody have rabbits or pigeons or, you know, if they're raising them for themselves. I don't see any of that, any issues there at all. Chickens in town are fine as long as they're hens.
Not a nuisance. Cause hens can be a nuisance if they get out and poop on someone's deck or eat their garden.
Which we already have nuisance ordinance.
Yeah, yeah. I would ta- I would talk about changing that from, it's really a dog ordinance. And it throws it on the end, other animals, you might wanna change it to. Maybe the nuisance ordinance.
Do you know, I was looking for that. Do you know where it is in here?
It's not in there. It's in the, it's in our two method blinders out back.
Okay.
That's what, yeah.
Um, that's, that's, we should attach the two together, yeah. Change the wording. Well, it should be.
You change the wording, wording, so it's a nuisance ordinance and it covers animals.
Right.
But that would, that would cover the kennel. Well, it wouldn't, yeah.
Well, we do the dog kennel and then underneath that, we can have the nuisance. We can change the nuisance animal off.
It would have to be a new one. Would that, I don't, I, is there something, Paula, about specifically kennels?
Um, we do.
Okay.
It's even in our table of contents on page thirty-nine where they.
That's, that's where you'd add to it separate from.
Yeah.
The nuisance covers that, a lot of that stuff with Maple Street is noisy.
Yeah. Maple Street is. Downtown.
Well, and that's why I'm saying with Maple Street, when it was okayed, there were a lot of conditions. That were attached to that in regards to cleanliness and noise issues. And they were told that if, at any point, they started to become an issue, that they, they could have their conditional use permit pulled. Back when it was approved.
Have we got any complaints on that?
I haven't.
And again, the nuisance animal could probably, ordinance could probably include. Dogs left outside barking for more than thirty minutes and. Here in the front yard that need to be on the barbecue. We had one of those this morning. Yeah, yes.
That dog one isn't, it, it talks about nuisance.
We just wanna make sure to. Wherever the nuisance ordinance is and nuisance under the dogs, read the same.
Yeah.
Yep.
So. Do, do you want me to come up with wording for these, or are you guys gonna pick one and you guys are gonna work on one, pick one, or how's it gonna work? You want me to come up with the order?
Click, click on a couple around the town, neighboring towns.
Because what, what'll happen is, we'll develop it, but then we have to have a public hearing and get the people's input.
Yeah, it, it's a process. Um. We'll get it written. Um, I will write something up accordingly. We'll see how they come. If anybody else wants to write anything, feel free. We can compare them and put them all together and see what comes out of it. Um, I think that's it for the evening.
So if you have wording, if you have specific wording for any of those ordinance that you feel is important, you should bring that to our next meeting, which. Is probably gonna be later, you know.
Um, speaking of the next meeting. Is, is everybody comfortable? I don't have a calendar in front of me. When would you be comfortable with having a meeting about the marijuana ordinances?
Right now, our next meeting is August seventeen.
Yeah, you, you're getting, be pretty busy, aren't you? Well, that, that's okay. We can have Paula um sit in for, for you. Through that.
Um, the July third, Monday in July is the twentieth.
You don't meet in July anymore, right?
So, yeah, I'd like to meet one time before, if we can. To try to iron out that uh, the ordinances. Maybe get them sent to legal so that we can. Move them forward, hopefully before the legislature comes in and signs the law.
Alan, I received an update. I don't know if you're available.
Yeah.
Uh, so I, we just got an email back from Tracy Jakes at the, she's the Director of Licensing for the Office of Marijuana Policy, so Bob Clark and I had emailed her. Uh, about the co-location of facilities, and this was her response, which I'll forward to Alan, you, Alan, and you can forward it along to anybody pertaining. Uh, said, good morning, Bob. Pursuant to section two, four, eight, co-location of adult-use marijuana establishments. Licenses may co-locate an adult-use marijuana establishment with a registered caregiver registered with the department. So we are legally now allowed to co-locate our facilities. Um, it goes on to say, however. Uh, subsection A states that no licensee may sell or offer for sale to consumers adult use and medical at the same time. Which is understandable because there's no meda- uh, no adult-use sales allowed now. But we are allowed to co-locate under current law. And I'll forward this to you, Alan.
Are there any limitations on co-location?
No, it just, no, it says we're allowed to co-locate an adult-use marijuana establishment or establishments. With a registered dispensary or registered caregiver. Registered with the department. So that's, we are, uh, Bob and I are both caregivers registered with the department. So we can co-locate under current law.
I think, yeah, I think the, the wording of the, the state law is in flux. We know that.
Sure.
But our ordinance doesn't, our ordinance just needs to spell out in plain English what you want here in town, correct?
Agreed.
Yeah, plain, yeah. A facility, and if you wanna call it a facility, you say, a facility means a single building.
That's what a facility means to this town. You know, if that's what you want, and you can have.
But it could also be a facility attached to a license.
Yeah, we can just change the word, facility license.
Yeah, it could be multiple facilities in the same location with different licenses.
That, that gets, that gets all, you're getting tricky there with the wording, and that's, that's what that attorney just plucked right out. When I was on the phone with him. So we can just say in plain English, if you want two buildings in town. Each of those two buildings are allowed to sell marijuana, and you just say, each building, those. It needs to be very clear, just plain old English, and then we'll send it to the attorney. I was kinda surprised that. The wording that was in the ordinance has gone through the attorney, because frankly, it was very. It seemed very clear that four facilities, four buildings are allowed in mechanic falls. From what I read, because I wasn't at the meetings. I was just reading the ordinance. It says four facilities. Okay, you have four buildings here.
No, must be yours. Then my phone unfurls.
So we would need to meet on the sixth of the thirteenth.
When is the legislature deciding to come back?
They're not. They're still, they're.
So that goes now until July eleventh.
They're having uh committee meetings, but they're doing those virtually. They're not in the state house.
So the thirteenth of July would be if. She allow. she allows us to come out of emergency session on the eleventh, then the thirteenth would be the next most immediate date after that.
Elections are. That would be not great.
My question is, do you, don't you have to have the council approving moratorium?
We can work on the wording of that with, of the moratorium. And if we get it finished according to how, how we want to have the wording done, we can send wording to the council to be approved for legal, all to legal, and just drop the moratorium.
That's what I was gonna say. The moratorium, we have voted to have a moratorium, so we don't have to have any particular wording. It just needs to go to council saying the planning board voted to have a up to a hundred and eighty-day moratorium on marijuana.
Yeah, and the up to means that we can stop this moratorium at any time. Correct. We change the wording.
But do we for a moratorium? I think to put a, we don't. They can just do it at their next meeting.
Stop that. In two weeks, would that be feasible? That would be June
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. Okay, so the next meeting will be June twenty-ninth at six thirty. Actually, it's not even meeting, it'll be a workshop.
If we want to be able to vote, it has to be a meeting. There's a potential we're gonna need to vote on anything. It needs to be a meeting because we're not allowed to vote in a workshop.
Yeah, we'd have to get it cleared first. Whatever wording we have coming up would have to be cleared first and sent to
The council.
Yeah, and to legal. So let's get the wording and then we'll go from there. Be a workshop. Six thirty. Hold entertain a motion.
I second the motion.
All favor. See you, guys.
Playing baseball.
Isn't it?